The Board for Land Use Hearings and Adjustments and the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I welcome you to the City of Benita Springs hearing this morning. I will ask you to please, everybody, stand as Robert Inserpi leads us in the invocation.
We ask in your name that this court be guided with wisdom and understanding in its decision-making. For all those who protect us at home and abroad, please keep them safe.
Amen. And Frank Lyles, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Would you all double-check your cellphones and please make sure, certain that they are on silence or vibrate? Charlie, roll call, please.
Robert Inserpi.
Here.
Chairman Darniger.
Here.
Steve Astori.
Here.
Richard Gunnaway.
Here.
Frank Lyles.
Here.
James Worster.
Stephen Heskey.
Here.
Very good. Everybody's present, thank you, this morning, except for James Worster. And Jim is not here today, he had a family emergency, and I have a statement to make. Let's call the case first, Audrey, and then I'll make the statement from him.
Thank you. We have one case on the docket today. It is Benita Grand Mine Industrial Plan Development. It's an amendment extension, case number PD-1416327-BOS, located at 25501 Benita Grand Drive. The request is to amend Lee County zoning resolution number 98071, as subsequently amended, to extend the termination of the mining by 10 years, from May 27, 2020, to May 27, 2030.
Very good. Before we begin with the presentations, I want to read a letter that I received from Jim Worster, who's a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Worster's called out of town on family, emergency. "To whom it may concern, I have two items I need to address to the above parties." And he goes on to say that this weekend he became aware of a serious family situation in Indiana that needs his attention, therefore it's probable he will not be at the meeting, which I've already said. "Benita Grand Mining, while it would not be feasible for me to participate by phone, I am providing this written statement to be read into the record as appropriate. I wanted to make sure that my feelings relative to Benita Grand Mine are clearly stated and understood, so that you could consider them, if you choose, during your decision-making process. I have spent the past two days trying to fully understand the request of the mine applicant per the IPD amendment to be considered before the board on Tuesday. In my opinion, this is a huge deal for the City of Benita Springs that deserves a thoughtful process of consideration of all of its impacts. However, what I discern from reading the staff's report is that basically, without any significant updating from the previous existing approvals for the mining operation, it is recommended that a basic continuing operation is okay for 10 more years. It is now decades after the mine started operation, conditions as to where the City of Benita Springs wants to go in the future, therefore the period between 2016 and 2030 that could be dramatically impacted by the two-square-mile area encompassing this application. This land could be a park-like environmental amenity that should now be considered as to what is to be allowed during the requested 10-year extension. I recognize there is a lot of history and possible implied vested interests that need to be appropriately reconsidered as a part of this application, noting that this will be a 10-year extension of older, possibly not complete IPD." Let me start, read that over. "Noting that this will be a 10-year extension of older, possibly not complete IPD, that is to be addressed at this meeting today, I feel it is fair to address now current thinking, projections, and standards. As we all know, this land is in the DRGR protected area. At the end of the mining operations, as requested in the application, I feel that it is incumbent upon the city to make sure the land is left in a pristine condition environmentally, at least as good as it was before the mining operations started years ago. If we approve, as recommended, I feel we will not get that result. Nobody knows today what the ultimate development of the property will be, however, when the mining operations are complete, is it not appropriate now to assure that the developable land is left in pristine condition for its next user? There's no hurry to approve this application today. I would like for the applicant to withdraw this application and consider reaching out to a qualified resident who is acceptable to both the applicant and those who would, undoubtedly, will have thoughtful and constructive concerns about the future of the property. Both the applicant and this resident will then strive to achieve a win-win situation for both the owner, allow extension of appropriate operations to extract materials, and the community, in parentheses, having positive impact as to the ultimate use of a beautiful piece of property at the end of the mining operation. The results of this getting to a yes exercise could then lead to an appropriate IPD amendment that would work for all parties." Thanks for listening, Jim Worster. So therefore, having said that, we will now call the case.
Thank you. And we've called the case into record. At this time, we would swear in witnesses, as well as du bois deire, if necessary, for anybody who may be a new expert. I want to point out to the public one more time. We came around and we passed out these papers, and I'll come back out. If you do not fill one of these out, or do not speak before the zoning board today, you will be restricted at City Council. City Council takes it based on the input and the evidence that they received in this case here today, so please fill one of these out if you're going to wish to participate, because otherwise I will be the one telling you, you cannot participate. So I'll give some to Mr. Kirby, and if he can hand them out, if anybody else, if somebody raised your hand, if Mr. Forbes, I see, has come in the room, if anybody else is interested, we can hand it out. Mr. Schrop, do you have any new witnesses that you need to have voir dire today?
Russell Schrop with the record, representing the applicant. Audrey, our witnesses will be primarily Dave DePue, we also have Craig Smith, Bill Morris, Tina Eckblad, David Brown.
Okay.
Available as experts for questions.
I think all of them have been previously been tendered as an expert here before. If they haven't, let us know. Let me have Ms. Gensen, Mr. DePue, please raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you provide today is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'm going to go to the rest of the staff members first. John Dolmer, Director of Community Development, is an expert in land use and planning. Mr. Kirby, I'm going to grab you for a second, you're an expert in environmental planning. Please raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm testimony you're going to provide is truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Do you want to have your folks, including fact witnesses?
I would, in case they have to stand up.
Stand up, so I can...
George Jonas.
George...
George Jonas.
I know, but we don't want, I don't like pronunciation. Please speak in the microphone, I'm going to pass it around, and afterwards I will swear you in. Say your names to the court reporter, and look at her to see if she understands what you're saying. If you have a hard last name, please spell it.
Craig Smith, S-M-I-T-H.
Tina Eckblad, E-K-B-L-A-D.
George Yonis, Y-E-O-N, is a Nick, A-S.
Bill Morris, M-O-R-R-I-S.
David Brown, B-R-O-W-N.
Raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm testimony you provide is truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Now, Mr. Brown, you've been previously been tendered as an expert in environmental planning...
Water quality.
Water...
Hydrogeology.
And Mr. Smith, you've been tendered as an expert previously...
I don't place it before this form, but I have to be, I have to be...
Do you want him voir dired, or...
Do you like to do it, or do you want me to do it?
Either way, doesn't matter.
Audrey, will you see if your microphone's on?
Testing.
It is?
Come up here.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Craig Smith.
And where are you employed?
W Dexter Bender and Associates.
And how long have you been employed there?
About 15 years, but I've been an environmental consultant since 1987.
And in what capacity are you presently employed at W Dexter Bender and Associates?
I'm a senior ecologist.
And as part of your job duties, what do you normally do as part of that job?
Delineating wetlands, wetland permitting, wetland management plans, overseeing management plans, monitoring, listed species surveys.
You've indicated you've been in this line of field, or this line of work, for how long?
Since 1987.
And could you please tell me a little bit about your education since high school?
Graduated from Clarion State University in Pennsylvania, I have a master's degree from the University of North Carolina in Wilmington. I am a senior ecologist with the Ecological Society of America, professional wetland scientist from the Wetland Scientists, and also a certified arborist. Certified arborist with the ISA.
I would tender the witness as an expert in ecology and wetland ecology.
No objection.
Can't hear nothing.
All right.
I'm sorry.
We need to, let me...
Well, I don't think it's that.
I don't think...
Is it working? Yeah?
That is now.
Does this one work? I'll speak into it a little louder, I apologize.
Well, no, I thought it might be in the...
I have no objection to him being tendered as an expert in ecology, as stated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. If I can have you, yeah, I just swear them in, right?
Yes, you did.
Okay, Tori Polonitza, Fred Forbes, Colleen Scott Duval, and you're not going to talk. Raise your right hands. Mr. Duval, you do not need to do it. Ms. Schwartz, do you have a question right now?
No, I was going to say that I wanted to speak.
You will. I'm going to go down the room. Okay, as an officer of the court, you do not have to. Some like to be sworn in. If you're a fact witness, you can be sworn in. If not, that's your call. Raise your right hands. Okay. Do you swear or affirm testimony that you will provide is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, let me get the names for the court reporter again.
Tori Polonitza, P-O-L-O-N-I-T-Z-A.
Fred Forbes, F-O-R-B-E-S.
Colleen Cloudini, K-L-A-U-D-I-N-Y-I.
Scott Duval, D-U-V-A-L.
And next aisle, gentlemen, are you going to testify? Okay. You can always, later on, decide to testify. If you, you know, decide, we do need to have you sworn in. No, Mr. Pure, Ron Pure, and...
Well, you can.
And David Luciano, and Linda Smith, Linda Schwartz. And Schwartz is spelled S-C-H-W-A-R-T-Z. Please raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm testimony you're going to provide is truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Mr. Gilkey, you're not, okay. Grab this.
Audrey, your mic's not working.
It's not working at all?
You can't hear a word you're saying.
Yeah, we really can't.
Mary Copeland.
Hey!
Wow. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm testimony you're going to provide is truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Didn't realize, sorry.
We're old men up here.
Yeah.
Well, mostly.
And I'll take your cards. That's okay. It's easier if I swear you in. Okay. I have Thomas Gibbons, G-I-B-B-O-N-S. John Michael Konwinski, K-O-N-W-I-N-S-K-I. And Barbara Caswell, C-A-S-W-E-L-L. Please raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm testimony you'll provide today is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Now, you don't have to testify at the time.
Can I?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And Donna Stone. Oh, God, my brain suddenly has a... Charlie Strater, or Charles Strater?
Dan Wagner.
And Dan Wagner. Please raise your right hands. And we'll get Meg Jacobson and Carolyn Gallagher, all in the same aisle. Do you swear or affirm testimony you're going to provide is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And I have my last aisle, I'll pass the mic around.
Just hold it close.
Jane Trulove, T-R-U-E-L-O-V-E.
Martha Simons, S-I-M-O-N-S.
Patty Whitehead, W-H-I-T-E-H-E-A-D.
Peter O'Flinn, O apostrophe F-L-I-N-N.
And please raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm testimony you provide is truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. At this time, Mr. Schrop, you may proceed with your case, I'll bring you the mic, but...
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'll try and speak directly into the microphone. The case may not take as long as the preliminaries. I'm Russell Schrop, I'm an attorney with the Henderson Franklin Firm, and representing the applicant in this matter, Benita Grand Properties, which is the owner of the Benita Grand Mine. I'm going to try and keep up with the slides, I'm not very good at PowerPoint, so bear with me. I'm here today with George Yonis, who is the designated representative for the Benita Grand Properties, the owner of the mine. Also here with the mine's planning consultants, David DePue and Tina Eckblad from Morris DePue and Associates, our environmental consultant, Craig Smith from Dex Bender and Associates, the consulting hydrologist, David Brown from Progressive Water Resources, and our traffic consultant, Bill Morris, also from Morris DePue and Associates. As preliminarily indicated, this is a request to extend the mining termination date for the Benita Grand Mine, from its present termination date of May 20th, or May 27, 2020. A 10-year extension to 2030 has been requested. The location of the mine, I'm pretty sure you're probably familiar with it, but it's shown on the aerial on the slide there. The mine is located at the northern terminus of Benita Grand Drive, and it covers two sections of land at the end of Benita Grand. As far as our presentation is concerned today, I'm going to provide some historical background on the mine itself, and on the permitting history for the mine. I've been involved with the permitting of this mine since the 1980s, so I've been pretty well-tracked along for about the last two decades, two and a half decades, on this property. Dave DePue will then follow my presentation with a presentation on the request itself to extend the termination date. Our other consultants are available, in case you have questions in their particular area or field of expertise, but we don't anticipate a direct presentation from them. This mining project received its first zoning approval in the 1980s, the late 1980s. At this time, it was owned by Sam and Connie Hubshman, H-U-B-S-C-H-M-A-N. The southerly section of these two sections, which is Section 20, was rezoned first in about 1986 or '87. At that time, it was in Lee County, and the mining approvals were historically granted in Lee County by means of a special exception in the AG or Agricultural Zoning District. The northerly section, which is Section 20, or, excuse me, Section 17, was zoned a few years after Section 20, and again, was rezoned for special exception in the AG2 district. So there were two separate zoning approvals initially. These were combined in the 1990s under a single zoning plan, and rezoned under then-current Lee County zoning regulations to Industrial Plan Development, or IPD. That occurred in 1998. In 2002, a few years later, a new master concept plan was approved for the mine, and a termination date of 2018 was established. This was later extended to 2020 by means of some statutory extensions authorized by the Florida Legislature. After the 2002 rezoning, the Hubshmans approached what was then the new city of Benita Springs, about the possibility of annexation of the property into the city, and the city expressed interest at that time, so we commenced discussions with the city government at that point. The interest, I think it's fair to say, on both the city's side and the mine owner's side was more in the possibility of transitioning this property ultimately from mining to some sort of residential use, as many mining projects have done in Lee County throughout the years, and you can think of a number of them that have transitioned from mining ultimately to residential use. The annexation was approved in 2003, it became a part of the city in 2003. Simultaneously with the annexation, there was an annexation agreement entered into between the city and the Hubshmans that recognized that the city, at that time, was going to be conducting a study of the Density Reduction Groundwater Resources Area, DRGR, and would include the Hubshman property and the mine property in that study, and that if the study ultimately supported doing a plan amendment for the property, that the city would process a plan amendment for the property. That's paragraph 3.3 on the slide up there, I don't know if you can read it from there, but that's basically the applicable provision. All this was kind of contemplated to be done in fairly short order, and anticipated that if it wasn't done within 18 months, that the Hubshmans could then request de-annexation from the city and return to the county, and the city would engage in its best efforts to de-annex the property. As you're no doubt aware, the issue of what to do with the DRGR area of the City of Benita still remains to this day. In the meantime, under the agreement that was entered into with the city and the Hubshmans, mining was recognized as a legal non-conforming use for the property, and it was allowed to continue within its approved parameters under the Lee County zoning regulations. As I mentioned, the mining was allowed to continue under the annexation agreement. This was further formalized in a vested rights determination issued by the city in late 2003 that, again, recognized that mining could continue unless terminated earlier by a rezoning of the property for an alternate use. Shortly after the annexation and vested rights determination was issued by the city, the Hubshmans sold the property to an entity known as Benita Grand Aggregates. With the recession and the downturn of 2007, '08, '09, came a slowdown in the demand for mining materials, and obviously, some economic issues arose for the mine. The economic issues for the mine continued from 2008 through '09, 2010, and into 2011, and ultimately, the property was transferred under dire economic conditions to the current owner of Benita Grand Properties. The current owner has worked hard to right the ship economically out at the mine, and has implemented a revised mining plan for the project that was reviewed by staff and approved ultimately by staff to establish revised mining limits for the property, as well as wildlife corridors within the property itself. The mine is now operating with a recently approved development order amendment, and has increased some productivity, since the construction industry has essentially started rebounding, as you're all aware. But clearly, I think it's safe to say, the economic slowdown in the construction industry that occurred from 2007, '08 until 2012, '13, the financial difficulties experienced by the previous owner of the mine, and the delays in moving forward with the plan amendment process have caused a timing setback here for the mine, and an extension of the mine termination date becoming a necessity. With that brief historical background, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dave DePue, who will walk you through the presentation request itself and the remainder of our presentation in chief. Thank you for your attention.
Good morning. David DePue, representing the applicant. Have I got this microphone close enough? Can everybody hear me all right? Usually, I'm loud enough that people don't complain that I'm speaking too softly, so if anyone can't hear me, just let me know, and I'll talk even louder, which most people would object to, but... The request before you is a request to amend the zoning approvals that currently exist on the site plan by extending the mining activity from May 27, 2020, until May 27, 2030. Why do we say we're amending Z-98-071? As Mr. Schrop indicated to you, there's two zoning resolutions, both of which are applicable to the current operations. In 2003, well, 2001, there was an amendment, but it incorporated the original amendment, which was Z-98-071, and that's how we get to the amendment that we're doing now, which is an extension of the timeframe for the mine. Additionally, you'll see in that particular resolution, it actually goes to 2018. That has, as Mr. Schrop indicated, been extended as a matter of statutory approval by the Florida Legislature in accordance with various extensions that are provided for storm and other sorts of catastrophes. All the previous conditions of the prior approvals would still remain in full force and effect. All of the reclamation requirements, all of the other elements associated with the mining approval would all retain, be retained, and with only one minor modification here that staff has requested, all of those will still continue to be fully enforceable by the City of Benita Springs. There are no changes in the master concept plan from the master concept plan that currently is applicable to the subject property, which is the master concept plan that you will find in the Benita Springs approval of ADD 13-05318-BOS. This is the master concept plan. I'm sorry, this does not focus all that well, especially given that we have a lot of notes on this particular page. It's a two-page master concept plan. There's page number two, and what happens is, between these two pages, you will see there are a number of cross-sections that are included, a number of individual specific elements to these site plans that are included, and you can see that the mining area is outlined in black line here on this aerial photograph. It's also shown in heavy black outline, and the kind of gray color on some of these other sketches that are included as part of the master concept plan. And among other things, these site plans detail existing areas for preservation, existing areas for restoration and reclamation during the process of the ultimate wind down of the mine. So the wind down alone, it's important to note, is a fairly time-intensive element. It takes a little while to do that, and part of the reason for the request here is because we do know that we're going to have some time devoted to the reclamation of the project itself. The existing schedule of uses has not changed. It is approved per the resolution that was approved in 1998, which is Z-98-071. The principal use is excavation and mining operations, and there are accessory uses, as detailed here on this particular slide. Again, none of these have changed from the original proposal. Traffic extends out, obviously, with the extension of the approval. These are the peak hour trip summaries, so we're talking about, in terms of total, the highest peak hour is in the morning, and we're talking about a total in the morning peak hours of approximately 97 passenger car equivalents. And what you do is you take trucks, which are deemed to be a slightly more impact on a passenger car, and you adjust the numbers upward to account for the trucks, and so these are equivalent passenger car peak hour trips in... And so these are equivalent passenger car peak hour trips in the morning. And you will see there's 97 total peak hour trips in the hours of the morning peak hours, which are for the mine at this point, in the 7 to 9 time period in the morning. In the PM, those trips slow down considerably, and there are 26 peak hour trips. There's an average daily trip count of 518 trips per 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM workday at the mine. In terms of the comprehensive plan, we believe that because the Benita Grand Mine is an existing vested resource extraction activity, as approved by the vested rights determination in case 2003-0001, that we are a use that is permitted under the Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan, either even though that mining is not a scheduled use within that plan, because this is a vested right, it is consistent with the plan. It is our analysis that shows the current request will not permit new mining within the city, nor will it expand the current mining area or the intensity of the mining activity. Consistent with both objective 1.4 and policy 1.4.1, the request only extends out the approved mining expiration date to 2030. We also, in terms of our analysis, took a look at some of the other elements of the comprehensive plan. We believe that we're consistent with objective 7.1, policy 7.2.4, 7.2.7, and 7.3.1. There are approximately 384 acres of wetlands and adjacent areas of native uplands that remain in conservation easements as part of this ongoing effort. You will also see the proposed wildlife corridors have been incorporated into the design of the mining plan. Again, that was consistent with the most recent master concept plan approval and consistent with the most recent development order issued by the city. The proposed mining extension request will retain all of the existing and approved conservation areas and wildlife corridors on the site, and the existing master concept plan will remain in effect with no additional impacts. Objective 15.1 talks about the natural functions of wetlands and wetland systems. As I indicated, all the wetlands and conservation areas currently designated on the site are retained. No changes are proposed in any of the conservation easements, the preservation commitments, or the reclamation standards for the mine. Terms of 9.1, water quality monitoring, 16.1.3 and 16.1.5, all of those elements are incorporated into this approval as a result of the retention of all the various conditions found in the original zoning approvals and the current zoning approvals, along with the development order approvals, the DEP approvals, the Water Managementistic approvals, and the full range of activities that are taking place. Current mining activities include water quality monitoring to ensure the activities do not negatively affect groundwater resources. That information and material has been provided both to Lee County and to the city of Benita Springs, so that they have got all that material, and it becomes part of their own data set for looking at these things. Well monitoring is required by existing permits, will continue to be required, and that data will continue to be provided to all of the various agencies. The surface water is currently being retained on-site. All of that surface water remains a part of the mine operation and will continue to be retained on-site. As I indicated, condition four, that the staff has modified slightly, requires the mine to continue to instruct drivers to use only Benita Grand Drive and not Terry Street for access. There are already three signs out there that the mine has put up, and all of the drivers are individually advised not to use Terry Street for access. And these are pictures of the three signs at the mine and along Benita Grand Drive. They are in both English and Spanish, and they, as I said, also include orientation to every one of the drivers when they come to the mine not to use Terry Street for access. In terms of neighborhood compatibility, we believe that there has been no change with regard to the current activities of the mine. The subject property is still located within the DRGR of the future land use map. As indicated, it is surrounded predominantly by agricultural activities, grazing, orchards, crappelands, wetlands, and uplands under both private and governmental ownership. There are legal non-conforming residential uses that exist to the west, consisting of single-family, mobile home, and recreational vehicles. And you can see on the aerial photograph, the Citrus Park and the Bellevillas area just to the west of the mine. You can't really see the distances there, but we've got roughly four tenths of a mile between Citrus Park here and the mine. And down here, it's about .35 tenths of a mile, thirty-five hundredths of a mile, if you will, from the southwest corner of the mine. So we're over a third of a mile at the closest point, and about four tenths of a mile when we get up into this area here from activities. And we're roughly a mile north of East Terry, which is this roadway down here. And you see the mine itself. This is, I believe, a 2014 aerial photograph, and it shows you where some of the mining activity has been taking place. And it also shows you the area along the east side of the property that is preserved, as well as some of the wetland areas within the site itself that have been preserved. So we believe the project is going to remain compatible with the area as it currently stands and will not have any increased impacts at this location. Conclusions, my professional opinion after analyzing this is that the applicant has indeed proven entitlement to the requested plan development amendment by demonstrating compliance with the Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan per the vested rights determination, the Land Development Code, and all other applicable codes and regulations. The requested zoning, as conditioned, meets or exceeds all of the performance and locational standards set forth for the potential uses allowed by the request, is consistent with the densities, intensities, and general uses set forth in the Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan, is compatible with the existing or planned uses in the surrounding area, and will not adversely affect environmentally critical areas or natural resources based on the retention of both the master concept plan and all of the existing conditions. The approval of the request will not place an undue burden upon existing transportation or planned infrastructure facilities as conditioned. All of the levels of service are operating within the adopted parameters by the comprehensive plan and as implemented in the Land Development Code. Urban services, as required by the Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan for this type of development, at this level of development, are available and adequate to serve the proposed land use as conditioned. The proposed uses are indeed appropriate at the subject location. This is an ongoing operation. It has been there, as Mr. Schrop has indicated, since the mid-1980s for over 30 years. The recommended conditions to the master concept plan and other applicable regulations provide sufficient safeguards to the public interest and are reasonably related to the activities that are anticipated by this particular request. And the recommended conditions are reasonably protective of the public interest as opposed to, or as proposed in this request. That concludes our presentation. If the board has any questions that either I can answer, or that Mr. Schrop can answer, or that any of our experts can answer, we'll be happy to address those. As you know, this is an ongoing effort. We have been involved in attempting to move the mine operations forward and transition that mine into something that is a little bit more compatible with some of the other areas that are evolving and that have evolved over the last 30 years. It's also taken quite a long time to do that, as we recognize from when we got annexed back in 2003, and it's now 2015, almost 2016. So if there are any questions, we're happy to answer those questions.
Do we have any questions of the board?
Could you explain to me, as I read through all the documents, you mentioned asphalt and concrete plant. Is that still a permitted use on the property?
It is still a permitted use on the property, yes, sir. As part of the original approvals, concrete batch plants and asphalt batch plants were permitted as ancillary uses for the mine.
So that continues to be?
That continues to be a permitted use, yes, sir.
Could you explain the governor's executive order, just for our edifications, so we understand more of the background here?
I'm going to let Mr. Schrop explain that, because that sounds like a legal thing. I've already been accused of being, of acting like an attorney when I'm not one, so.
The two statutory, or the statutory exceptions that were granted, and Audrey, please correct me if I misstate anything, but there was some legislation passed several years ago that authorized extensions in, at times when a state of emergency was declared by the governor, usually for hurricanes, but sometimes for fires or other matters. And there were two states of emergency declared a couple of years ago for hurricane, or tropical storms Debbie and Isaac, and they authorized extensions of six months plus the length of the state of emergency by statute. And so that's, those two extensions were granted, which extended the dates out to May of 2020.
Thank you. And there are two other items that I think relate to the history of this project that maybe you could just touch on briefly. One is a compliance agreement. Could you give us the background on what that was and status today?
Certainly. In the mid-2000s, 2006, '07 timeframe, there were some compliance issues under the previous owner. Number of issues, but I think the significant ones were there was a fire that evolved at the Mulch location that took some effort to put out. And also, there was some excavation beyond the then-approved mining plan. It strayed over past the actual mining limitations. Commenced discussions and negotiations with code enforcement staff for the city resulted in the entry of a compliance agreement, I believe in 2009, that specified various corrective actions that would be necessary for the mine. As I indicated in my presentation in chief, at that, that was about the point when the mine was experiencing some economic difficulties, ultimately went into foreclosure. The new owner took over in 2011, and has since, I think, lived up to the terms of the compliance agreement admirably. I think most of, I don't think there's anything we're not in compliance, and I think there's still things that we are still comporting with and complying with. But the recent development order amendments recognized the revised limits of the mine. I think it reduced slightly the limits of the mine, but basically incorporated revised limits for mining operations into the mine moving forward. The other requirement that I'll mention was there was a requirement to convert or to provide for bonding or security for ultimate reclamation of the lake banks associated with the mining. That was just recently accomplished with the city, and we have posted a letter of credit with the city to secure the costs of the reclamation of the lake banks.
And in addition to that, there is a, the city issued an administrative amendment in 2009. Does that have anything to do with the compliance issue?
You want to, you may have a better recollection of the 2009 amendment. Was that the?
Dave DePue, the 2009 one has been superseded by the 2013. It was a modification to the site plan, and it also dealt with some of the preservation and conservation issues, but that has been wrapped up in a kind of a larger compliance agreement, which is now the 2013 administrative amendment that superseded the 2009 amendment.
Is that 2013 agreement part of our package? And you had mentioned that, when I asked a question about the concrete and asphalt plant, there is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County that's in our package here that says, "The request to amend the schedule of uses to add stone, clay, glass, and concrete manufacturing group three is denied." Is that?
Yes, sir. That was a concrete block plant, and that request was taken out. The batch plants are not group three.
I'm sorry, what?
The one that was denied was for a concrete block and paver plant. And that request was denied by the county commission back in the last amendment that they had approved. But the batch plant uses were still approved. Those were group one, I believe. Have to look that up, but the group three, I remember, was a concrete block and paver plant.
So it's group three is, okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay. Do we want to?
Mr. Chairman, if, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for interrupting. May I please submit for the record just a copy of our PowerPoint presentation to the clerk?
Absolutely. We'd love to have that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. At this time, do we want to do our staff report? Are you ready for that? And then we'll, after which, we will take public comment. So we will call Jensen. You're going to lose your job down there.
Good morning, zoning board members. For the record, Jack Wilton-Gensen with Community Development. And as explained earlier, we do have John Dolmire here with Community Development. He's our director. And Mike Kirby, who is our environmental specialist. Just to go over the request again, this is to amend an existing Lee County zoning resolution as subsequently amended, as you know, with the 2002 Lee County zoning amendment, and then also the two administrative amendments to extend the mining termination date by 10 years. Based on the applicant's analysis and the LDC findings for staff to make their recommendation, we felt that the application did meet those criteria, and therefore, we recommended approval of the request. Again, just to go over some of the information, a lot of our information will be duplicative of the applicant's, but just to get staff's report on the record, the future land use designation, the property is under two land use designations in the city of Benita Springs, which is the DRGR, and Resource Protection. Current zoning is industrial plant development, and the current use is a mining operation with ancillary uses. There was an extensive review list for this project for staff. Staff from planning, zoning looked at the review request, environmental. The city has an inner local agreement with Lee County Department of Natural Resources who looks at water quality data, so they were involved in this review process. For traffic, we had our city's transportation analysts look at this, and we also involved Lee County Department of Transportation, since a lot of the truck mining routes would affect Benita Beach Road. So all those disciplines were incorporated, and also the city, sorry, the city attorney's office, due to the legality and the vested rights items as well. Again, as Mr. DePue went into further, a lot of detail, in your backup attachment B is the existing zoning entitlements, which include the Lee County zoning resolution from the 1980s, oh, sorry, the 1990s. I did not include the original 1980s, since they were subsequently superseded by the original Lee County resolution in '98, amended again in 2002. And then at that time, as they explained, it was voluntarily annexed into the city of Benita Springs in 2003, contingent on the city completing some studies, and if appropriate, determining if the property would remain as it is, or if it would be suitable for a different land use classification based on those studies that were conducted. They also obtained, again, the vested rights determination, which is allowed per our administrative sector. section of the comprehensive plan, and they are currently operating and asking to extend those operations underneath that vested rights determination request, or sorry, the approval. As the applicant also stated, there are two administrative amendments that staff did process. Staff is allowed to process amendments administratively per our Land Development Code under certain parameters, and those amendments did fit those parameters, and that is why those applicants, or sorry, those applications were processed in that manner. And as the applicant also explained, there were executive orders where the city has to extend approvals. It's a statutory item that we have no jurisdiction to deny. So the applicant did go ahead and submit those timely, and those entitlements were extended accordingly. As the applicant stated, this is also just an aerial of the property, Benita Grand Mine. Oh, I apologize. I'll do that. Aerial and location of the property, Benita Grand Mine, I-75, just to give you area of location, unincorporated Lee County to the north and unincorporated Lee County to the east. To go over the surrounding property, future land use zoning and uses, which is also contained in the staff report, to the east, you have the Lee County Conservation Lands Upland and also comprised of wetlands. It's zone AG2, and there are vacant lands, mostly under governmental ownership. To the south, you have a variety of also Lee County property and also city of Benita Springs property with AG2 classifications, and again, a variety of upland and wetland properties. But you also have some active agricultural cropland uses. To the west, you have, all within city limits, it's DRGR land use property with AG2 zoning and mobile home two zoning, but a lot of these are legal non-conforming uses where they were in existence, or they had obtained their subdivision plats prior to being classified as DRGR. So those uses do exist, but they are legal non-conforming uses. To the north, you have the Lee County DRGR, which is comprised of, oh, and a wetlands, I apologize, with agricultural prop, zone property, and some areas you'll see have active grazing on them. Active grazing. Just to reiterate, for the master concept plan, there are no changes to the master concept plan. Therefore, the master concept plan that was approved as the 2013 amendment is fully in effect. Again, no changes to the master concept plan are anticipated or requested as part of this use, and it is included in your staff report as attachment A. Again, I'll go over them as Mr. Depew did, and I think you have a larger copy in front of you. But this request, when it came in, it actually was a reduction in intensity of the mine. They proposed to reduce the mining excavation by at least 7 million cubic yards, and they also increased the open space. So again, within the parameters for staff to review these administrative amendments, we were well within our boundaries by the Land Development Code to go ahead and approve that amendment. And also part of this amendment, we established conditions to create wildlife corridors, again, just recognizing the importance of those attributes for this property. Again, just the different, the proposed master concept plan and a comparison of the 2009 and the 2013. And the legend here shows you the variety of the preserved areas, excavation areas, and areas to be, not to be excavated, and open space areas to be created. Conditions of approval, again, as the applicant had stated, the full conditions of approval in the 1998 zoning resolution, as amended in the 2002 regulation, and any other conditions that were brought forth as part of the administrative amendments are in full force and effect. So those would be maintained with this zoning action. The only change they're asking for is to increase the mining termination limits. We also amended condition 15A of the 2002 zoning resolution, and we did that because at that time, the 2002 zoning resolution was when the property was in unincorporated Lee County. So the condition was more so, I would say loosely worded, where the city would, or the county would cooperate with Lee County as a different entity jurisdictional wise. So we went ahead and revised those, that condition, based on some previous input we have heard from complaints of residents using Terry Street, or sorry, the trucks using Terry Street. So we just wanted to make this condition stronger, so we can have more enforcement. Surrounding property and compatibility, again, the property is predominantly surrounded by agricultural uses with grazing, orchards, and crop lands, also with wetlands and uplands under governmental or private ownership. The closest residential use is over 1,600 linear feet away, which is the Swan Residence. It's a single-family dwelling unit, one dwelling per 10 acres. And then you have your single-family mobile home and RV residential uses in the Citrus Park and Bellevia community. There are conditions that are already contained in the existing zoning entitlements that deal with water quality monitoring, buffering hours of operation, and truck traffic. As I stated before, Lee County Department of Natural Resources was extensively involved in this review. They went back and forth with the applicant's consultant, asking for data analysis dealing with water quality monitoring. And again, all of that data analysis is included in your backup. That's why the packets are so thick. So again, I apologize. But that is because, again, Lee County Department of Natural Resources thoroughly looked at this for water quality monitoring purposes, as it's conditioned in the zoning resolution. Based on those items, we as staff believe that the project will remain compatible with the surrounding uses and will not negatively impact the area. Consistent with the Benita Springs comprehensive plan, again, it's located in the DRGR, but per the vested rights agreement, they are allowed to continue to operate under their current zoning entitlements. Resource protection, because there are wetlands on the property, and based on our comprehensive plan, there are certain designations on the property that are designated as resource protection, and most of those areas are either in conservation easement, or you'll see them on the master concept plan as preserve and open space areas. To minimize incompatibility is another policy within our comprehensive plan, when it's located adjacent to residential. And as I explained earlier, in the existing zoning conditions, there are conditions relative to hours of operation, buffering and berms, location of certain uses within so many feet of the western boundary. So in terms of compatibility, per the comprehensive plan, the way the property is positioned and conditioned under the existing entitlements, it is compatible with the comprehensive plan inconsistent. As we explained earlier, with objective 1.4, 1.1, 4.1, the project is allowed to continue to operate, even though it is technically considered inconsistent, an inconsistent use with the DRGR classification and resource protection. But because they obtained their vested rights determination in 2003, they are allowed to continue to operate as a mining extraction use within the city of Benita Springs. As they explained earlier in the applicant's presentation, the Land Development Code outlines findings of fact for staff to make their recommendation, and based on those findings, which there are 10, again, the project meets cert seeds performance and locational standards. It's an existing mining use. It's consistent with the densities, intensities of the DRGR and the resource protection classifications as vested, as a vested rights use in the 2003 agreement. It is compatible with the existing unplanned uses in the surrounding area. It will not place an undue burden on existing transportation or planned infrastructure based on the use that it has. Again, transportation analysis was performed, and there are adequate levels of service, and based on its use, it has the appropriate urban services to service it. It's not going to adversely affect environmental critical areas or natural resources. Again, extensive data analysis was provided and analyzed through Lee County Department of Natural Resources and Environmental Sciences in our office. And just also to reiterate, part of the compliance agreement that was done in 2009 requires an annual monitoring of a restoration plan, which staff does. And also, what I forgot to mention is, in 2002, there is a condition about the reclamation plan for the lake banks. So, and so it's supposed to go ahead, and when it gets reclaimed, there are certain criteria within a 2002 document of how those lake banks will be restored and replanted. Urban services are available. The mix of uses, there are not a mix of uses, but the use as it currently operates is appropriate. There are adequate conditions in the master concept plan and existing zoning documents that do safeguard the public interest. The conditions that we have proposed are reasonably related. And the last one is deviations enhance the plant development. There are no new deviations that are being requested of this request, but that is one of the findings that staff has to review. So based on those findings, staff recommended approval of the request per the Land Development Code. And staff is here if you have any questions. I don't believe Lee County was able to make it, but again, I have provided all of their backup and correspondence in the backup of the staff report.
Frank? Turn on the lights. Thank you. At this time, does the, does the board have any questions?
I have a question for Jack, a couple of questions for Jackie. Jackie, did, has anyone from the staff, city staff made a physical inspection of the property in connection with this request?
There's been, Mr. Kirby.
You know, we're still having problems with the microphones. I don't know. I don't know if you're not speaking loud enough, or if the volume needs to be turned up in there, or what it is, but it's difficult to hear.
Mike Kirby, Senior Environmental Specialist, Community Development. I have been out to the site probably about four times a year since 2008. So I have been out with the mine manager, John, and Craig from Dex Bender. So I've been out there numerous times.
Okay.
Thank you. And Jackie, the other question, it's been mentioned a couple of times here, the reclamation plan. We don't have a reclamation plan in our package. I think we need to understand just what that's involved, what happens at the end of?
It's a 2002 document, so in the zoning resolution 0247, it is condition. It's condition eight of zoning resolution 02047. I do have that document with us. It's very general, but I'd be happy to go get it. We can make a copy for you of the reclamation section.
What, when I took a look at it, it was just written, it was, it was an amount of plantings that were required around the lake banks. So after, you know, a large mine gets restored from an ERP permit, they do the four-to-one slope, but lots of times, cities and counties, Lee County, required plantings along the littoral zone. So this reclamation plan in the counties was mostly a description of the amount and type of littoral zone plantings.
So it didn't really talk about use? Did it talk about?
No.
So it will, the property will continue to be owned by the applicant, which are just being five lakes, right? Private, privately owned.
There'd be privately owned lakes and surrounding uplands and wetlands as well.
Forever.
Well, it would be privately owned. Most of the wetlands are in conservation easement at this point, but the remainder of the property would be privately owned, yes.
So when this use agreement expires in 2030, what will the use of the property be?
Well, that's a good question. We have been pursuing a plan amendment that would allow for ultimate conversion or transition from mining to some alternate use, and so a lot will depend on what the city does with its comprehensive planning efforts in this area of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
So it could be recreational, it could be, depending upon how the city acts at that time, it could be recreational, could be development, could be left as is. The reclamation period, how long does that, that's an ongoing project? It's a continuing project as you close down certain areas, you reclaim the land?
Yeah, I probably need to get my environmental consultant, or Dave, if you know.
Typically, and if you want more details, we can, we can get some of the specialists.
Just basic information on the reclamation project, and how is it done? Because I don't think any of us have actually been on the property. You know, it says do not enter, so.
We can get you out there if you want to come out there. Bob's been on the property, I know. Typically, what happens is the lake, the lake slopes, the lake bank slopes are redressed, regraded to the proper slope. In this particular instance, it was a four-to-one slope that was permitted. Then the littoral plantings are put in, in the areas in which they're located, in the quantities that they're located, and monitoring continues on with that. Now, the process itself is typically a six to 12, sometimes, and this is a, this is a lot of lake shore, it might even be as much as 18 to 24 months to actually complete. But typically, you won't put littorals, for example, the plantings in areas where there's active mining, or there's active mining that can affect them, because the turbidity in the lakes while you're mining is very high. And that's, you can see that on the aerial photograph, the difference in colors in these different lakes is a result of where the active mining is taking place, and the high turbidity in those mines where they're actually excavating. So you don't want to put the plantings in areas with this high turbidity. You want to wait until the excavation has completed, you want to wait till the lake banks are resloped, and then the littorals come in. And that's what the bond is for, that we've posted for all this, to make sure that that happens at the end. And like I said, typically, it's a six to 12-month process, but in this instance, we've got an awful lot of lake shore. I may be able, if you got, if you want to know more specifics about it, I can get somebody up, but in this one, it may be even as much as 18 to 24 months to get all of that done. It's a, it's a big process. There are miles and miles of lake shore that have to be recontoured, and then the littorals planted.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none. Any question? Okay, we'll open up to public comment. And when you come forward, please speak loudly into the microphone, pull it down towards you, and state your name and where you're from and your purpose.
All right. Good morning. Tori Polanica, former member of the City of Benita Water Strategy Task Force and 20-year resident of the Benitas DRGR. I do not believe continued mining is the best use of this land. This property has come up for discussion as a residential community in the past, and that land use fits this location far better than continued mining. It seems inevitable that this issue would come up. The property owners entered into the annexation process with the city with the residential development in mind. Study after study, nothing but inaction. The more Torium, more studies. The Water Strategy Task Force recommendations, and still more inaction on the part of the city, has left the mine with no other options. The public's unwillingness to see the benefits that could be achieved by taxable revenues, improved environmental standards, water quality improvements, and water storage built into the planning of such a community would benefit all of Benita. The continuation of mining on this site will dig deeper into our lands, increase heavy traffic in an area already full of residential traffic. When you add the Logan extension and the building of a new high school, that's a dangerous, if not potentially deadly, combination. Denying the mine the ability to develop this property as a residential community has led to this disastrous proposal to continue mining for another 10 years. To deny it, and the city risks a major lawsuit. I hope the citizens of Benita Springs will keep this in mind when choosing candidates in the upcoming election year. The no action, no growth, head in the sand city council members that have dragged their feet in any of the proposed changes put forward by the Water Strategy Task Force, under some illusion that they are benefiting our city in the long run, have led us to this, another decade of mining, and no road improvement money, no improved water storage capacity, no filter marshes, nothing. Let me finish by saying that not one, not one of our invited consultants to the Water Strategy Task Force meetings, not South Florida Water Management, not the representatives from Lee County Government, not our environmental consultants Jim Beaver or Kevin Irwin, felt that a residential community, excuse me, was an unfit use of some of the land within the DRGR. And they all agreed that with the right BMPs in place, we could partner nicely to improve the issues now plaguing our city, the much-loved Imperial River and the Gulf of Mexico. Sadly, it's a predictable shame that we- Sadly, it's a predictable shame that we have come to this, a fine mess we've gotten ourselves into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter O'Flynn, for the record. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Board. One thing has been made clear here today, and that is that mining is not allowed under the Benita Comp Plan. So how do the applicants and city staff get to the view that they can continue? As I sat there, I probably heard about 15 to 20 times that there was a vested right determination made that permitted mining. It is the backbone of the city staff's recommendation to approve this, that there's a vested right determination. However, no one has read here today the vested right determination. It does talk about mining. It was approved in 2003. But it says, the critical part of it, "The parties acknowledge that mining must, must terminate on December 31, 2018." So what this does is give them a right, but on its face, it explicitly says, "Mining must terminate on December 31, 2018." Also, the annexation agreement to which the mine is a successor in interest clearly states, "The parties acknowledge that the mining and processing use and ancillary uses must terminate on December 31, 2018." So the notion that they have a vested right that gives them, in effect, if you took their logic, that vested right determination would give them the right to terminate ad infinitum. This is a critical part of the determination, and it's being ignored. So in effect, there is no reasonable basis for determining that this 10-year extension is permissible under the comp plan. Mining is not allowed. And in fact, the objective that is pointed out in the staff's report says, when you have a continuing use, they shall be reduced by attrition. What is more attrition than a voluntary binding agreement where someone agrees, "I'm going to stop on December 31, 2018?" So I think that's clear-cut. I think it's a non-starter under the comp plan. Second point is just something I want to get on the record. It is totally unclear whether or not an action by Governor Scott to extend a permit enters into an agreement between the City of Benita Springs and another party. When I look at this agreement, I do not see the state of Florida as executing this agreement. So it very well may be that they have a permit that's been extended under Florida law properly, but they still have an agreement with the City of Benita Springs to stop mining on December 31, 2018. A few other points. Citizens of this town were given a package, actually, were not given a package, were given a PDF of over 1,000 pages late last week, if you accessed it online, to enter into a discussion in this meeting with this board on one of the most major applications in the history of the City of Benita Springs. I do not think that that process is reasonable as applied to the citizens of Benita. To ask people to digest over 1,000 pages within a space of three or four days on something this critical is on its face unreasonable. So considering that, I tried my best to go through the rest of the application. And, you know, what we saw up here today in terms of those slides of the mine that was illegible in terms of what happened last year in this administrative agreement, the one that had in it that they had to make sure that 951 extension came through, that wasn't also mentioned here today. Couldn't read those maps. I'm not saying it was intentional, the maps are very small. But it goes to the process. The people should have a reasonable opportunity to understand and digest what is given them and a reasonable time to react to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Peter O'Flynn.
Good morning. Scott DuVall, here with the law firm of Brennan, Manna &amp; Diamond. And I'm here representing multiple parties. And I was going to talk later, but Peter did a good job of probably eliminating the first part of my discussion here. But I've got four points that I'd like to make, and if you could indulge me a bit. I see you're not using the timer, so I appreciate that, because I might go a little longer in three or four minutes.
Turn it on.
No, no, no.
We don't, we don't time zoning.
Perfect. Oh, good. Okay, great. As Peter mentioned, both when they started the mine activity in '86 or '87, that first Lee County zoning in '98 required or allowed for 20 years of mining activity, amended in 2002 and reiterated that 20-year provision when the property was annexed in '03, as Peter pointed out, that there was a specific termination date of December 31, 2018. May or may not, arguable, I guess, but I'm not arguing whether the executive order extending it to May 27, 2020 is right or wrong. Let's just assume that 2020 is the termination date. The residents of Benita Springs have relied on those documents and have relied on the fact that the mining activity will stop in 2018, 2020, whichever, whichever date you want to pick. To suggest that the residents are going to be subjected to another 10 years of mining, and that's not going to have an adverse impact, is ridiculous. One thing we haven't heard, other than the economy has been bad, is the reason they need 10 years more to mine. There's been no reasonable cause shown, no substantial competent evidence presented by the applicant as to the need for this extension. There's no limitation on the number of draglines and equipment that they can have on the mine site between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. The economy is a business risk. We all have that business risk in our business. I don't come begging to the city to reduce my taxes if the economy's bad, or change the laws because the economy's bad to benefit my business and help me make more money. I think that the lack of substantial competent evidence regarding this 10-year extension could have been two years, could have been five years. Why 10? They don't have anything in their application as to why 10 years is necessary. As Peter pointed out, the Comprehensive Plan, that's a very important document. And I think we're here today because city council has failed to act for a number of years. The Comprehensive Plan has two provisions that I'd like to point out. Policy 1.7.1 of the future land use element requires that in order to best protect groundwater resources by year-end 2004, "The city shall have completed a study to identify the types and intensity of uses that should be allowed within the DRGR area," goes on. That policy is reiterated... I thought I had it handy, sorry about that. I think it's 1.16.1 of the preservation, oh, here we go, 16.4.1. "Within one year of adoption of its Comprehensive Plan, the city shall undertake a study to identify the types and intensity of uses that should be allowed within the DRGR," and it goes on. "The city comp plan requires the city to study the DRGR and determine what uses will be permitted. Mining is not a permitted use." That's been clear today. The city has failed to act, and because of that, the mine's here today requesting an extension because they don't know what else to do on the property. It's incumbent upon city council to do their job, and we've studied it, the DRGR in '03, '08, 2013. I chaired the water task force. We studied it ad infinitum. I've got three boxes of materials. We've studied it. Enough's enough, it's time to make a decision. Not your decision to make, city councils. Also, in regard to staff's recommendation of approval, they indicated that the use complies with both the comp plan and Land Development Code, and I respectfully disagree. Section 4-2345 of the Land Development Code specifically talks about enlargement or replacement of non-conforming use. Let me quote, "No non-conforming use of land shall be extended, or enlarged, or replaced by another use not specifically permitted in the zoning district concerned." I think that's pretty clear. Section 4-2345 was mentioned in staff's report, but not quoted. And how staff can say that that, that this extension complies with Land Development Code is beyond me. The mine has filed a Comprehensive Plan Amendment requesting a change to its land use. That was filed in 2013, February 2013. There was a moratorium put in place because everybody was scared, oh my goodness, somebody might actually do something in the DRGR. So city council enacted a one-year moratorium. That has ended. It ended eight months ago or 10 months ago, and that process is still in place. I suggest we deny this application, let that process play out. Let's see what they can use the property for after their permit expires in 2020. So in summation, again, the property residents surrounding that area have relied on those dates, both in the annexation agreement and in the zoning, zoning applications. The applicant has not provided any substantial competent evidence as to why they need an extension 10 years. Both the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code do not allow this extension. And frankly, no decisions can be made by this board or the city council in regard to any property in the DRGR until they, the city council has done their job pursuant to the comp plan and determine what land uses are permitted in the DRGR. Finally, just as an aside, I represent a number of mines, believe it or not, not this one, but some other mines in the state of Florida. And mine owners are smart, mine operators are smart. They know what their, what their permit end date is, and they plan accordingly. They're coming to you early because they want to be able to do long-term projections. That's intelligent, that's fine. But if you deny this, they still have a plan, they still know what they need to do for reclamation. It's not going to take two years, I can tell you that. It's six to 12 months. But they've got to demobilize their equipment, they've got heavy equipment they need to get rid of or move. It's a six or 12-month process. They know that. They're going to mine as much as they can in the meantime. Maybe we enter into some agreement that they can store existing mined material for longer than their permit. I'll let them deal with that on another date. But really, we need to defer to city council to have them do their job and determine what this land use is going to be on this property, and all the properties in the DRGR. Thank you.
Thank you. Come forward. And if you want to speak, there's a gentleman coming up this way. Why don't you line up the center aisle, those that wish to come forward?
Also, there are people coming up who have not been sworn in. Please make sure you let me know. I do know that Mr. McCourt has not been sworn in, so we'll do that right now, but if there is any other people out there. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm testimony, provide today's truthful truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
And before you start, to that point, do you want to swear those in now, if they'll stand?
I'll just wait, see if they come up.
Okay.
Gentlemen, good morning. Pat McCourt, for the record. You're faced with a...
Pat.
Pat, Patrick, yeah. You're faced with a very unusual opportunity, a very unusual opportunity. As I see it, you have an opportunity here to dramatically increase the value of that property out there. You are representing the citizens of Benita, a city that derives a large portion of its income from taxing the land. And here you have a non-conforming operation out there that's systematically removing that land. I think, I find that kind of ironic, putting it in trucks and taking it down the road. And I hear all of the reasons why we should extend this, but I don't hear what, what compensation they're giving the citizens of Benita. And I think that that's the one thing, if you plan to go through with this, and I hope you don't, but if you plan to go through with this and approve it, I hope that you will take the opportunity to extract something substantial from this mining operation. We all know they've been in financial difficulty in the past, they've gone through receivership and all that sort of thing, and I can almost guarantee you it's going to happen again, or eventually will happen again. And what's going to happen to the reclamation of that land if we have an operation out here that's bankrupt and is not, you know, they've, they've taken the resources out of the land and they can't afford to reclaim it. So the one suggestion I would throw out to you is that if, in fact, you do, for some strange reason, decide to go ahead with this, that you require them to start putting into a sinking fund immediately, substantial amounts of money that will more than cover the reclamation of the land when they're through destroying it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, for the record, my name is Fred Forbes, Benita Springs resident. Lot of good points made, some points I don't agree with, but I would say this, I think that you should turn this request down, at least at this time, or the applicant should give serious consideration to withdrawing it. I'm very concerned, as it is, that I think the application even had checked off waiver of environmental review, and I'm fearful if this was approved, that that would mean there wouldn't really be a serious re-review of this by DEP and others since the time it was approved many, many decades ago. I'm concerned about, even though we've heard that there's no problem with water quality from mining and all that, I would, I'd like to have time to have experts look at that. More important, the restoration plan that's been proposed for the mine will not look like what you envision a restoration to be. And I actually heard this from some of the people associated from the mine when they were talking about developing a higher-density residential project. They indicated that the restoration would not leave it as, you know, a beautiful place. It's going to have some planning, it's going to have the banks improved, but it's not going to be restored. It's going to be restored to the minimum requirements of the state of Florida, and they ain't that good. They're good enough to get by, but they're not what this community deserves. I think it would be nice to get a restoration expert in, mutually agreed to by the mines and the city, to come up with a good restoration plan that would leave that property when it's completed, mining operations cease, in a state that it could either be turned over to the city, like the park in Fort Myers, I think it's called, the Lakes Regional Park, which was a restored gravel pit. Or, if for some reason that can't be worked out, they are entitled right this minute to one home per 10 acres, and that would make lovely estate-type lots out there that would sell for a lot of money. The homes would be expensive, and that's another option. I really believe that it should be turned over to the city and made into something maybe called the Veterans Memorial Lakes Park and dedicated to all the people that served the country since the founding of the country. Now, secondarily, the traffic plan that was presented is, I don't believe it's enforceable. And I can tell you, as a bicyclist, I ride on Terry regularly over to the YMCA, and there are still convoys, not one, but convoys of trucks using Terry Street. So I'm a bicyclist and can testify to that. I think we need, they need to come up with a plan to really look at where the trucks are going to go, and they, no trucks should be allowed to shortcut. For example, when Logan Boulevard's open, what's going to happen is if they've got deliveries to make east of Logan on Amokley Road, they're going to whip right out Benita Beach Road through all those residential areas and entrances, go down Logan Boulevard, hit, hit Amokley, and then go east, as opposed to going a different route. So again, I think that's another point that needs to be developed. I do agree that a restoration plan should be proposed by them, a strategy to fund the restoration, including sinking funds, escrow accounts, whatever, to protect the money in case there is a change in the economy that would adversely affect us. In addition to that, some of the mining area has... In addition to that, some of the mining area has already been completed. Those areas in this interim time period, especially if it's extended, could be restored now as opposed to when the extension period is over. I do think that there's an opportunity for a win-win from everybody. And I do think that the city council will deal with the DRGR in due course. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got copies of my testimony I'll give for the record.
Sir?
Including, there's a brochure on the, that mines up in Fort Myers that was restored into a park.
My name is John Konwinski, and I'm a Citrus Park resident. I own on Citrus Blossom South, which is the most eastern, most residential street, makes us close to the mine. That area that was referred to as being a third of a mile away from the mine. I can show you on the map if you'd like.
That's fine.
This is the back entrance to Citrus Park, and I live on the east side of Citrus Blossom.
My perspective is a little different. Since I lived there, I want you to know how much the blasting at the mine shakes our property. If you were there in the olden days, when there was a lot more blasting, you could just about set your clock about 11 to 11:05, that, that's the mine. It's less frequent now, but you still hear the wine glasses in your cupboard shake. And you, you might be entertained by this. My brother was visiting me once, and he took a nap on the sofa, and he jumped up and he said, I didn't know Florida had earthquakes. He had come back from Iran, and he experienced earthquakes there. And this was a similar experience for him. This summer, I had a pewter statue my sister gave me on top of one of my bookcases. And it, it fell over, and its nose is now flat. It's strong enough with this, it's like an earthquake, and things fall. Now, the prior owner of the mine once had, before I lived on Citrus Blossom, I lived on Pixie, they would have a painter come out. If you could show them all these cracks that suddenly appeared, they wouldn't patch the, the cracks, but they would paint over them. And they did that with a representative from Citrus Park, Tamara, come through, and they paid the painter. That's been discontinued, as I understand it, by the current owners. I didn't like the way the staff referred to Citrus Park as a non-conforming use, when this mine is a much more impactful, non-conforming use. It's not really a study done by staff, it's almost a rubber stamp of the owner's application. I hope that they are bound by a former December 31st, 2018 agreement to stop this mining. I would say you should deny it, deny the request for an extension, and let's get this thing converted to residential uses as soon as possible, whether it's 2020 or 2018.
Thank you.
Good morning, planning and zoning members. Patty White. Okay, thanks, Roger. Good morning, planning and zoning members. Patty Whitehead from Estero, also board member of the Responsible Growth Management Coalition. I haven't come with any prepared remarks, but I'm listening to all the speakers here, and I've listened to this morning's testimony. I do have some questions for Mr. Depew, from which I would like to, you know, then launch my comments. The question is, how much, looking at the, at the slide up there on the, on the wall, how much of the mine has actually already been mined out, and how, what area are they looking to actually continue their operations in?
Let her finish her remarks and then
Well, actually, my remarks are based on that, knowing that, that answer, because I don't think it was really clarified in, in initial presentation.
I'll let, go ahead, Mr. Depew.
I would say probably 95% of the surface area has been impacted by the mining operations. In terms of the reserves, I'm going to have to ask Mr. Morris if he knows the extent to which the reserves are still subsurface in there. In terms of how long to finish, again, we anticipated that, given the, the market conditions and the demand, which obviously we're crystal ball gazing for the future, would be encompassed by the 10-year extension along with the reclamation efforts that will be undertaken as well. But if I could ask Mr. Morris to come forward and give me an estimate of the reserves that are left with the mine.
And also, the, the outline of the land area, where, the remaining land area that'll be impacted, I imagine
That's why I said, probably 95% of the surface area that has been impacted has already, that's already been done.
It won't, it won't be revisited, is what you're saying?
No. We may go back and deepen certain areas of the lakes. That's what I am saying.
Okay, all right.
Certain lakes will be deepened, depending on the material that's being, sorry, the material that's being requested.
All right.
In other words, our, the excavation excavates a series of different types of material. Depending on what the market demand is for each of the types of material, some of the material will be excavated from whatever area that material is located in. And you may go back and forth depending on what the demand for the material is. So some areas, you'll be excavating one area because you're getting a certain grade of rock. You then may have a demand for some other grade of rock that's not in that area, but in a different area, so you'll move the, the equipment over to the other, the second area to excavate the second quality or grade of material. And that typically happens with all of these mines, and that's what's happening out there now. So the only way to really answer what areas have been mined out is to look at the topographic and the bathometric data, which is submitted to the city on an annual basis, and the various monitoring agencies such as the DEP on an annual basis. And that gives you the underwater contour of the mines, what have been, what has been excavated in what area, and what remains to be excavated in those areas. I'm not sure that was, that was maybe more detailed than you wanted, but that's, that's how the, the operation
Thank you, sir. Yeah.
And Mr. Morris, can you tell me how much material we've got left as an estimate?
Oh, boy, I can't read that. That one, my glasses.
It looks like we've got about 16 million-plus cubic yards left to excavate, based on our estimates. We have already excavated, no, that's the total measured? Extractable reserves is 16 million? Correct. Okay, so 16 million cubic yards left.
And how many, how many have already been excavated? I'm sorry?
I don't have that number.
You don't have that number? All right. So, you know, gentlemen, you have a huge bargaining chip in your hands. The issue is, is that, you know, they're looking at, the whole thing is up for grabs for, for, for the continued mining operation. And I don't know if there's a, a means by which you could control some of that and say, okay, start your reclamation, and you're limited to the types of material you can extract. One issue with them going deeper is, you know, they could penetrate the confining layer and really mess up your aquifer. So that, that bears a lot of investigation right there alone. So I, you know, echoing the remarks of Mr. Forbes and Mr. McCourt, I'm not saying, don't grant it, but grant it with great, grave reservations, and say that, start your reclamation operations, and let's begin converting some of these lands back to their original ecological The discussion was brought into the room about high-density development. I don't even see how that enters into the picture. That's not, that's not being discussed here. That's, that's, that's not an issue that's, that's, that's up for, for, for consideration at this moment. What is vested is one unit per 10 acres, all right? Now, maybe there's a TDR program that takes place, and they transfer those development rights to the westernmost fringe of the DRGR. That might be a possibility. But I would say, if you do grant this, do it with grave reservations, consider how much material they're going to extract, consider the quality of your aquifer ongoing, and the quality of reclamation lands that they're leaving behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, Charlie Strater Kent Road, and while I'm trying to get this computer open, I can attest that, yes, it's very shocking as far as the vibrations go, and for some reason, I mean, our under, our substrate is karst limestone, right? We're pretty familiar with that. I think by now, imagine a sponge, and it's interconnected waterways, and it's very fragile. We're not sitting on a layer of granite here. So when the blast occurs, your first effect is some, you think someone grabbed your chair behind you, and you wonder who snuck up behind you. The second effect for people of us that live in a stilt house on pilings is a literal swaying. So when you see these things on the earthquake, oftentimes the worst damage is the swaying. That's when he lost his, his pet or thing. While the computer is up, I'm going to read something into the record first, but I certainly don't envy your decision. And I guess the decision, it may be more obvious as far as the best use of the land for the owner, and we all have sympathies for that. We wish all of our lands could reach their potential economically. Certainly, I do as a landowner here in Bonita Springs. But the question for you and the city is, what is the best use for the city carrying into the future? Before I get into my ideas, I thought I would read while the computer battery is still up. There was a document created by Mr. Greg Rawl, Rawl, in July, that's R-A-W-L, July 2008, called Lime Rock Production and Demand in Southwest Florida. Nice, concise little document. He's a mine planner, and many of you know him from past studies here in the city. Probably the most pertinent sentence, which relates to my concerns, which are mostly environmental, states, "Reserving sufficient land for mining is critical to the economy. Yet avoiding overallocation is also critical, because mining is an industrial, industrial process that unavoidably destroys natural resources and is not compatible with most other uses of nearby land. In addition to the permanent removal of all vegetation, lime, lime rock mining physically removes significant portions of the porous rock that stores and protects groundwater that flows into Lee County's potable water wellfields." So if you're imagining a hole nearly a mile square that goes into your substrate, 60, 90 feet, I'm not sure, I've heard different figures, to think that doesn't have some sort of impact to our groundwater, let alone our wellfields, is just hard for me to, to comprehend. And, and like Mr. O'Flynn, I had not have time to digest 1,000 pages in supplemental reports that are referred to in those pages. For instance, what really is the road impact on Bonita Springs? I understand on traffic, yes, one truck may be equal to so many cars, but no car weighs as much as those trucks. Actually, Bonita Grand Road is holding up pretty well considering, but for those of us that have been driving it for 10, 20 years, what have you, you know, you do see a change in it. So how does that affect the impact fees that Bonita Springs get, or the county, to, to replace that road and repair it? So I, I really would like to know more about the actual road impacts in those terms as far as road degradation. Environmentally, it's, it's just a lot of questions to remain. I mean, maybe this is a good thing for Bonita Springs. Southwest Florida Water Management is out digging big holes all over Florida. I don't think any as deep as these for water reservoirs. Maybe there is something to be said, the benefit of a lakes park or something like that. But there's clearly other environmental impacts, I would think. And, you know, you hate to see one side against the other, and it's really hard sometimes to get that objective outside view. But there are people that maybe are less, not committed, but involved in one side or the other of these issues. There's limology experts up at FGCU, there's Greg Rawl, who's been studying water down here. In other words, for the city's benefit, I respect our staff a great deal, and don't doubt that as far as the application itself goes, that it probably meets their, their requirements in their mind, therefore they approve it. But again, this goes beyond this. This is, this is another 10, 20 years into the future. So what is the best possible use for the city? Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Donna Stone, I live at Worthington Country Club, and I'm on their External Affairs Committee. I am curious as to why there was such a fast meeting posted about this mine extension to the public. This is an extremely important issue for Bonita Springs. To have all the information received and understood in less than a week is not fair to the citizens that you're supposed to represent. We went through a year moratorium to understand and discuss the DRGR and the mine issue. One of the major suggestions for that land is a retention reservoir and a filter marsh. Every bit of digging, developing berms, and drilling is affecting our water. If they want an extension to 2030, what is their end plan? Are they going to repair the road damage done to Bonita Grand from the truck traffic? At the Bonita Springs comp plan meetings recently, protecting our water is one of the most important subjects, excuse me, brought up by everyone, on every committee, on every panel. According to the Naples Daily News article on 9/27/2015, Toledo, Ohio, standing at the edge of the Great Lakes, the world's largest surface source of fresh water, is bedeviled by numerous problems. Algae blooms, agricultural runoff, overflowing sewers have become so toxic that they shut down Toledo's water for two days. The USA paper stated that Columbus, Nebraska, has to do a $3.4 million cleanup at three sites linked to groundwater contamination. Every day, we see more heartbreaking news from California about no drinking water in some towns, rationing water in other areas, fires from all the drought. How much more do we have to see before we learn the lesson that we must protect our water now? The DRGR mine area and the land between Terry Street, Bonita Grand, and Bonita Beach Road is our only source of water for the entire city of Bonita Springs. I am going to quote Howard Corwin, "Florida's ecology is fragile. Florida faces enormous environmental challenges. Once the land is lost, it is lost forever. By prioritizing environmental preservation in the face of enormous development pressure, this group could set a guiding precedent with town support that will serve our city for generations to come. It is now or never. Please think before doing anything to that property. Our future water is at stake. I am asking the applicant to withdraw its application until a written plan for the end zone is in place." Thank you.
Before the next speaker, at 11 o'clock, we're going to take a 10-minute break. And it's
What time is it now?
You have 10 minutes to speak. 10:49.
Well, I wanted 15.
Well, you'll have to take your five after that.
Ron Puer, Bonita Springs.
Sorry, Ron.
Ron Puer, also representing TAG, Taxpayer Action Group. Let me ask you folks, let me ask you folks, how many of you, in light of the fact that, as someone mentioned earlier, this is probably the biggest single issue to come down Bonita Springs main roads in many, many years, have visited the site recently on this board?
Springs main roads in many, many years, have visited the site recently on this board? Recent? Great. I would encourage all to do the same before you entertain voting on this. And do not enter. I'm sure that you have clout enough to get entree there. Just some random thoughts, as usual. I, I think it's time for the planners and the zoners, you folks, to please consider holding firm to what we now have, I'm told, in place, and that is a one unit per 10 acres in that particular area. Everybody seems to be dodging that issue. I, I hope that you'll lead the way. Council has been behind their chairs on this one for many, many years. I also would like to bring attention to the folks that may be hearing this for the first time, that the tax benefits that these folks have and have taken advantage of, because it's out there legally, in recent years, the taxes have dwindled for the owners of that property, down to about $50,000 a year. Six or eight years ago, taxes on that property, property taxes attributable to that property were about $600,000 a year. So with both that fact and combining it with the turnaround in the economy, and I had a tribute to the neighborhood last week, I gotta tell you, the trucks are boogie and they're rolling, backing down, up and sideways, upside down, and so on in that, in that neighborhood. There is mucho revenue being generated by the company. There should be no complaints. I wouldn't, I would find it hard to understand if there, anyone in that business at this point were complaining over the past several years. Do we owe them an extension? No, I don't think so. I think this ought to be looked at as a franchise. They have an agreement with the city. It was effective up through 2018 until a, a year or two ago, when a group, a small group of people, for however they, they were able to do it, they were fandangled into a position of giving this company a two-year extension, which now we all know brings them to 2020. But they're looking to go out to 2030. I think the city, you folks, I don't know if you've been involved with franchise agreements in the past that this city has engaged in, but there are several people that think that they have been woefully shy in getting from the franchisors, or the franch, the people looking for a franchise. We've been way behind the curveball with respect to getting money from those franchises that have done very, very well in our city. Name a few, Comcast, Benita Springs Utilities, the nonexistent at this point Dog Track Slot Machine Operation. I think we, as a city, can do much better. The demand is great here for what we've got to offer. There are three things that I, I'm told that, or have read somewhere that you folks are charged with, and that they are traffic, environmental conditions, and I can't remember the third one. But in light of those two alone, I think that you're holding a, a very good position to take the, or make the right move with respect to this. At this point, I'm not advocating a, an extension, or a, I'm not opposed to an extension, because there are a lot of things involved with this. One of the things would be, I, I believe that the 10-year extension would enable these folks to maneuver quite a bit between the year 2020 and 2030, depending on the political times, to seek things other than what we are discussing today. And they could be detrimental downstream for the, for the city. On that note, I hope you'll all at least visit the park, the mining operation, before you vote. And I hope you'll take a hard look at the 1,000-page document that has present, been presented to the public before you vote, because there is a lot of, well, a lot of info to digest, and I think it would be premature for you folks to vote today. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. One more, after this lady, we will take a 10-minute break.
Good morning. My name is Mary Copeland. I've come here as a citizen of Benita Springs. I moved here 15 years ago and soon realized that we did have a mining operation that was in our community. And I have followed the reports and I've listened to all the experts here today, but I'm saying to you, as a resident of Hunter's Ridge Community, I live right near here, I traveled Benita Grand, I traveled Terry. There are trucks that are using Terry. I am going to look for the signs that they say that are posted, that they are not to be using, making that turn onto Terry. I am observant and I haven't seen them, but I could have missed them, but I will look for them. I am, when there was a downturn in the economy and the trucks were not on the road, I will tell you, quite frankly, I was really relieved. I don't enjoy being on those roads with those trucks. And they're moving. I mean, they are really moving. And I would never want to be involved in an accident with one of these trucks. I am concerned about the quality of the living that we have here, the water that we're trying to protect. Our council really has a big job. You do as well. What are we going to do? When I realized that the mining would end, when it was, when they said it was going to end, truthfully, I was delighted, because there have been the sounds that we've had to deal with. And I will stop, because I say, "What was that?" I have felt it, I've heard it, when there's the explosions. So I'm asking you, really, do diligence. Look at what is out there. They have been given the time to take care of their business and there was an agreement. I would personally like to see it end, but I understand there's more at stake here and I hope you gentlemen will do your job and really consider what we're looking at. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think those signs that you're looking for, you'll find are north of Terry Street on Benita Grand, so it's a good chance that you wouldn't see them there as they, as you exit the mine property. Okay. Having said that, we're gonna take a 10-minute break for the cause and we will reconvene shortly thereafter.
You can go.